To call to order our regular meeting for City Council, Monday, March twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Pursuant to Government Code, Section five, four, nine, five, three. Members of the Daily City Council and staff will participate in this meeting via teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch the meeting via live stream, City Council Meeting livestream, at HTTPS colon backslash backslash BIT dot L Y backslash Daily City. M A R two eight livestream or on local channel twenty-seven on Comcast. Okay, so I'll call to order Pledge a Flag. So let's go ahead and some flag.
Let's just try.
United States of America.
The Republic which is stand.
One nation.
One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right. Roll call, please, Mr. City.
Oh, Mr. Boyne Ventura.
I'm present.
Ms. D Giovanni.
Present.
Ms. Manalo.
Present.
Mr. Sylvester.
One Sylvester present.
Dr. Rod.
Present. Okay. Okay, we have a couple of presentations. So we have one presentation by Love Daily City. Citywide community volunteer opportunities with Bob Eusebio, the second Pastor Emeritus and Marlon Vallad, Vallad, Valladarius Pastor. Sorry for for your for miscommunicating your name. But go right ahead with your presentation.
Okay, good evening, City Council, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and council members and city officials. Thank you so much for inviting Pastor Marlon Valaderas from Westlake Community Baptist Church on Elmwood Drive. And my name is Bob Eusebio, pastor of Livingstone Ministries of Daily City on eighty-seventh Street. Um, just a short testimony, my wife Hazel and I have, when we moved to Daily City, I promised that we were going to move back to San Diego after a year. And but things change. And after thirty-one years of being of being a resident of Daily City, I don't think we're going anywhere. This is home. And if you don't mind, I'm going to share it from my heart. I really feel that God has had wonderful plans for our marriage, for our family, and as residents of the Franciscan Mobile Park, if you're familiar with our Mobile Park here in Daily City. Um, Pastor Marlon and I belong to the Pastoral Ministerium of Daily City. And about eight months ago, we were inspired by a ministry in Modesto called Love Our Cities. And the director of this ministry, he encouraged Daily City to to consider an event with the purpose of bringing our community together with some projects that would that would help us work together, partner together, but also bring about a sense of unity in our community. And so our core leaders involves Pamela D Giovanni, who's been at a couple of our events, and also Officer Randy Ortiz, who serves on Daily City Police Department, is also partnering on the Core Leaders Team. And so I spoke to the director at Love Our Cities, and they started their first event at Love Modesto years ago. And their first event, they were hoping to get one hundred people. They ended up with an attendance of twelve hundred. In two thousand and nineteen, when they had their next event, they had about seventy-five hundred members of the of Modesto join in, and they grew in all their projects around the city. And so we have three projects that Pastor Marlon is going to present in just a moment. But the purpose of our our meeting here tonight is to request use of the Daily City Hall parking lot for April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. And at this time, I'd like to pass on to Pastor Marlon to do a short presentation of our event called Love Daily City.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Is it okay if I share a video or slides? What would be most appropriate?
Pastor, I'm actually able to share your video if I can start with that.
Yeah, please go ahead.
One second.
Have you ever seen a problem and thought? Somebody should do something to fix it. We believe that somebody can be you. We want to give you that opportunity. Love Daily City is a volunteer movement with the vision to love our city so that it will thrive. And we accomplish this through an annual citywide volunteer day. We have three areas for volunteering: love, feed, and clean. Love, giving physical and/or emotional support to help the body and mind. Feed, providing food and grocery items. Clean, removing trash to keep our neighborhoods looking great. Join us to help make Daily City a place of good neighbors. Love Daily City. Perfect. You can tell that's that's my voice. I put a cartoon character because I'm I'm better at my voice than my looks. Again, Mr. Mayor and City Council, I just wanted to highlight what we're trying to do on April thirtieth. You saw the three areas, love, feed, and clean. Love, we've been able to partner with Second Harvest Food Bank. And we're going to be distributing, I believe, Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, about two hundred boxes of food.
We're able to get that up to three hundred.
Three hundred, yeah, yeah. And this is separate from the already food drive that's going on at Jefferson Union High School. This is going to be near the top of the hill, Daily City, at Good News Fellowship Church. That's going to handle our food part. Our cleaning part is we're hoping to clean up Mission Street, starting at the bottom of where the Colma border is, going all the way to the top of the hill, Daily City. And as far as our love part, we've partnered with Ann Cooney of of the the Dozer Center. And we are asking, we have about six churches involved at this time, and we're making each church has been required to make at least one hundred new cards that we're going to be giving out to seniors either on that day or sending them to other individuals who can't get out. And so this is something we're hoping to do every year. This year is our first event, and hopefully it'll be bigger. Right now, we are asking all our churches to participate, but it's not just for churches. Anyone can participate. And our website is lovedailycity.com. You can go there and register and see what other events there are to be there. But again, like Bob, he mentioned coming to Daily City. I was I was raised in South San Francisco. I apologize for that, but I love Daily City. I've come to not only love it and cherish it, I've also come to the point where I want to protect it and maintain it and cause it to flourish. And throughout this pandemic and stuff, it's caused me as a pastor to reach out to the community. And and reaching out to Officer Ortiz has also allowed me to reach out personally to Dr. Morenco at Thornton High School. I've been able to provide some of my video services that I do. And Pastor Bob and I and other pastors, we just want to let our city know we want to be a positive influence. We want to serve. We want to do things that will inspire others again to be good neighbors. So that's really all I have.
And I just wanted, Pastor Marlon, I just wanted to add that Ann Cooney from Dozer Senior Center has been very, very enthusiastic and positive about partnering with us. We want to recognize our senior citizens in Daily City. They've 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 been around the block. They've got a lot of hard knocks experience in life, but they ended up settling down in Daily City. And we want to show them how much we appreciate their their what who they are in Daily City. And so with the cooperation of about six churches right now, our first year, we've got hundreds of thank you cards that we're going to be sending out to them. Ann Cooney has prepared on the twenty-third at Dozer Center to prepare a table for Love Daily City so we can distribute the cards. And so we're very, very grateful for her participation. But we're also grateful for councilperson Pam, who's been very enthusiastic in our in this new ministry and also our first ever event. We're anticipating probably about three hundred of the community that will be showing up that day, but we're hoping that we're going to get a bigger turnout based on word of mouth. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Pastor Marlon and Pastor Bob. I know we have some some words from my fellow colleagues. So I'll start off with Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you so much to both pastors who presented this amazing event. It's always wonderful to see how you could bring people together. I remember Pastor John Grucci, who reached out and said that you all had met as five pastors to really bring this together back in September. And it's so wonderful to see it come to fruition this spring. I think that when community members come together, that it's just beautiful, from young children to old, just teaching them, teaching them at a young age to be able to be good community members. I love that, you know, you're honoring our elders. I think in our communities, it's really important that we honor our older adults. And really, I can tell there's a lot of thought and energy towards this. And the name itself, Love Daily City, it sounds wonderful. So thank you for this. I love. I am also a local that grew up in Daily City ever since I was eight years old and now raising my family. And so this is something that we do love. We love Daily City and we care about Daily City deeply. So thank you for your leadership to both of you and all the pastors and all the churches involved. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Pamela D Giovanni.
First of all, so great to see you two and missed everybody. You didn't know that I had that eye surgery. So that's why I haven't been able to attend the last one. But I'm back on board, you know, thanks, you know, thanks be to God. And blessed that you guys are continuing and forming it and doing everything you can to make sure that we have our community together, honoring everyone here and bringing it is full of love. And what else could there be, right? So I'm looking forward to the next meeting. And then somebody can text me. That'd be great. And I see how it's already evolved and grown already. So that tells you about the hard work, the foundation that you guys provided and the reason behind it and why and and why it's led by so much love for our city. It's beautiful. And I look forward to that day. I know all the hard work you guys are doing, but it'll be it'll be like flourishing. I feel it. I just know it will. So blessings of love and looking forward to it. And Randy Ortiz, wherever you are, thank you as well. Our Daily City PD, our firefighters, Pitt, everybody, right? And your wives and the whole, everybody. So I'll see you in the next one. And I'm very humbled to be a part of it. And and this is a flourishing time for all of us and we and well needed, especially because of COVID. So thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. So thank you, blessings.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Definitely. Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me see, let me lower my hand here. I like to make a couple of comments, if I may. And the first is to Pastor Subio. You know, until you provide a story, especially your own personal story, connections can be made. And in the case of San Diego and how you explained coming from San Diego, well, I was quite the opposite. Since nineteen ninety-nine to the time I retired in two thousand and eleven, I traveled to San Diego many times, sometimes twice a month to train law enforcement. And I came home and I told my wife, if we were to leave Daily City, we would go to San Diego. But of course, that has since changed. And my son, another reason why we were down there, my son went to San Diego State. So I feel the connection there, and I appreciate the story. For Pastor Valideras, I'm not going to forget your name because I worked with a police officer and her name was Marcia Valideras. So I definitely that brings back memories. So it's those little tiny connections that I'm bringing up. Today, I received a email correspondence from one of our representatives for age, you know, Daily City is an age-friendly city. And there's a representative there, part of the committee, who would like to be involved. And she put out something to the group saying that she's going to request to become involved, a Miss Phyllis Rizzo of the Bay Shore. So you'll be hearing from her. She's one of our seniors, and she's very well spoken. And you'll be hearing from her. And she definitely wants to be involved in in regards to the senior aspect. I like to say congratulations on your project. This will augment many other programs that we have in Daily City, especially our recent one called Clean Daily City. So I wish you all the best of luck. And I think you're putting Daily City on the mark in a sense that other cities will perhaps follow this same program. So I commend you both. I wish you the best of luck, and you have my full and complete support. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Pastor Eusebio, I know you had your hands up. I don't know if you would like to share.
Yes, um, um, I'm not very good at 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 marketing or public, anything that has to do with public connections, but I sent a very simple email to a news reporter by the name of Betty Yu with K P I X. And she responded, and she said that she said that she will talk to her producers and whatever the action that is going on at the end of April, she was going to see if she can come out to Daily City and interview our city for the event, Love Daily City. So we'll we we hope that she can do that, but we'll see what happens. I just wanted to mention that.
Pastor Vice Mayor Ray Buenentour.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the pastors for all getting together, and I would actually invite you all to open up your tent even more. I know that Father Leonard Oaks of the Holy Child in Saint Martin's Church in Daily City, he's been very involved in Daily City and in the community. So if you would perhaps open up your tent a little more and reach out to more people, I think that would be great. But that's awesome program you're doing, and I wish you all the best, and I think it's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Pamela D Giovanni.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that Councilmember Bonaventure that appreciate that the new the new father is Father Yurk Jerk. And I believe you did send an email out to our church, Holy Child and Saint Martins, that Oaks is no longer there, but appreciate the sentiment about Holy Child, Saint Martin being involved. And and thank you for mentioning my church, Councilmember Bonaventure. It's a great opportunity for everybody to come together. They did. They actually said, how many Pastor Marlon and Pastor Bob, how many? They sent out to all our churches.
Back in August, yes, we sent out, including Saint Martin, I don't know if they got our email, but it was it was in the form of email to about sixty churches in Daily City.
Yeah.
And so we feel that it could be at this time that God has different plans for each individual church. There's so much work going on in our city. And so hopefully, maybe next year, maybe next year, they'll feel a call to want to participate. But I took a note down for Saint Martin Church, and I'm more than happy to reach out to to their to their office this week.
I'll send you Father Jerk's cell number.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, pastors. I also feel like the work that you are doing is also aligned with the values and approaches to Daily City. I just gave a whole state of the city address. And, you know, a lot of things that we're talking about in terms of providing food for those that are have that are food insecure, to reach out to seniors, to in terms of providing food for those that are have, that are food insecure, to reach out to seniors to, to have a, provide a cleaner Daly City. It's closely aligned to what we, we strive for in Daly City. So I thank both of you all for putting together this event and hopefully this begins something that's tradition in our city. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Do you have any other final comments or? No? Okay. So thank you for coming to our meeting and we'll be in contact. Thank you so much.
God bless you, everybody. Thank you.
God bless you too.
Thank you.
Our second presentation for today is proclaiming the week of April third to April nine, two thousand and twenty-two as National Library Week in Daly City. We have Teresa Faupoua, Lord, uh, Library Board of Trustees President and Patricia De Vera, Daly City Public Library Associate Board President. So I'll go ahead and read it off on the screen here. So libraries are accessible, whereas libraries are accessible inclusive places that foster a sense of communication or connection and build community. And whereas libraries connect people to technology, providing access to broadband internet, computers and training that are critical for accessing education, employment and opportunities. And whereas libraries offer opportunities for everyone to connect with new ideas and become their best selves through access to multimedia content, programs and classes in addition to books. And whereas in times of crisis, libraries and library professionals play an invaluable role in supporting their communities, both in person and virtually. And whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all. And whereas, uh, libraries strive to develop. Oh, whereas to adapt to our changing world, libraries are expanding their resources and continue to meet the needs of their patrons. And whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions for all members of community, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. And whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. And whereas libraries, librarians and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now, therefore, I, Rodas Magwal, Mayor and the members of the city council of Daly City do hereby proclaim April three through the ninth, two thousand and twenty-two as National Library Week in Daly City. During this week, we encourage all residents to connect with their library by visiting online or in person to access resources and services. And I believe we have Teresa Faupoua from Library Board Trustees President and Patricia De Vera, who is Daly City Public Library Associate Board President here to accept the proclamation. If you all have a couple of words to share, I'd appreciate it.
Mayor, Teresa Faupoua is unable to make it tonight.
Okay.
But she's letting know she would have been really honored to accept this proclamation.
Great. Not a problem. But we also have Patricia De Vera here as well.
I am here.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Rodas Magwal and the entire city council. On behalf of the Daly City Public Library Associates and alongside the Library Board of Trustees, we are pleased to accept the proclamation, April three through nine, two thousand and twenty-two as National Library Week. We celebrate and thank all that the libraries and librarians contribute to our communities and promote the use and support of our public libraries. The Honorary Chair for National Library Week, two thousand and twenty-two, Molly Shannon, Emmy nominated and Spirit Award winning actress stated it well. And as I reiterate what the proclamation states, libraries are places where communities connect to things like broadband, computers, programs, classes, books, movies, video games and more. But most importantly, libraries connect us to each other. To our Daly City community, please continue to advocate for our libraries. For the Daly City Public Library Associates and again for the library board, on behalf of the Library Board of Trustees, thank you so much for this proclamation. Have a great evening and thank you again.
Thank you so much, Patricia. We have Vice Mayor Ray Buenetoura.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I wanted to acknowledge and thank Patricia De Vera for all the tremendous work that she's doing. She was also a former library commissioner, as was I and also as was Mayor Rod. So we all come back, come from your same pedigree of serving on the library board. I think you're doing a great job. I think the, the DCPLA lunch was a tremendous success. And I think you're starting off really great and your commitment to serve the, the libraries is, is really having an effect and, and you're making a present. So I guess the only question I have for you, is there going to be a trivia night in November? Because I certainly go to that.
You better. There should be and I will be there. Thank you so much for all the kind words. Thank you so much for your support as well. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Next up, we have Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Oh, she's on mute.
Oh, Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni, you're, you are on mute right now. Oh, you're still on mute. Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that.
There you go.
Sorry about that. President De Vera, even saying that, that your name like that represents something that's long overdue because you're, you know, your leadership and you know, your pedigree, right? We can't get, escape that DNA that you have, although, albeit you have formed your own leadership, right? Out of that, because your heart and your compassion and, and your drive for your community and what really matters. And when everything is all like technology and, and the libraries are keeping up with the technology. But you're right, it's where communities come together and that we don't want to lose in our city, in our communities. And to our Board of Trustees, Teresa Faupoua and the Board of Trustees, I know that you guys keep advocating. It was a fabulous event. I know that we're going to talk about it later, that, um, you could just feel the love in the room to be together again. And I do think that that is what brings us together, the commonality. And for those that have not joined DCPLA, I'd like to encourage you to renew, either renew your membership, right?
Right. Yes, thank you so much for, thanks for the advertisement.
It doesn't take much. It's only twenty dollars minimum, but generosity really feeds and flourishes and they use every single dollar for our community that I can attest to. So for everyone out there, let's just keep our libraries going to President Faupoua and the other members, the trustees, and to all of us who love the libraries. So let's keep it moving and keep those hours and hopefully we can keep expanding. So thank you so much and thank you to all of them and Victoria, your board and everyone. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks so much, Pam. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, no problem. Thank you. Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, President De Vera, for being here and all your work to support the libraries. I think it's just a wonderful that we have committed community members like yourself that really give back and ensure that our libraries are thriving. I recall my first experience at Top of the Hill, John Daly Library. When now it's museum, but that library was my first time I stepped into a Daly City Public Library in my elementary school years. And I'll never forget, what I did is I went in there, I tried to look for a book and I found a book on the Philippines. And it was, uh, on the cover of it was a, a young boy, like the big smile. And it just talked about, you know, um, wasn't, uh, it was about the food, the culture. But I, I, I gravitate to that and I still remember that moment. And so that moment for me was so special going into that Top of the Hill Library that to this very day, being, okay, I'll say my age, you know, forty, forty, forty-two years old, it still brings a memory to my mind, right? And that, what book I chose and I, I mean, so it's tremendous work. I know it's a digital world now, but, but still like those moments, whether it's picking up an iPad using a computer or, or whatnot, but just being able to be there as for the community is huge. So thank you so much for all the work to the DCPLA, to the library staff. It's just amazing and I know that these libraries are community hubs for people.
Yes.
Young and old. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I had to rush to the room very quickly, so I temporarily left because I first of all want to apologize that I couldn't make the event, uh, which wasn't really far from me. So I ran to the room to show you that I was going to wear.
Okay, I guess I can give you that. You're off the hook.
I wanted to wear it so much because it was a funny tie. It's got a picture of it. So I just wanted to bring that out there. But in all honesty, Patricia, I was listening and you said something about broadband. What? We now have broadband in our libraries and I thought it was just Wi-Fi. But when you say broadband, broadband means speed and quick access and no waiting time. So I'm very, very happy to hear that. I like, I like to thank you. Okay, hi. I like to thank Teresa Faupoua for her work on the commission and all the commissioners on the, on, on the library commission. They do such great work and they continue to push, uh, being part of DC, uh, the libraries. And thanks to DCPLA, Victoria as well. And, uh, one of the commissioners, I must say, reminded me, hey, make sure you up your membership. And so, you know, I submitted a check for five times the membership.
Awesome.
And, and unbeknownst to me, I just received a letter that a commissioner paid for my membership as well. So I have no problem at all. I, uh, all the funds are going right to the library. So it's a good thing. Thank you. Congratulations to our libraries and they will continue to grow with you folks, especially at the helm. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Ray Buenetoura.
I wanted to just actually make one final comment. I, I, as I was watching you, Tricia.
Yes.
I could not just, I can't, your Tita must be so proud of you. For, for, from, for most of you who, who, or maybe don't know, Tita Linda was also a library commissioner. And, and Tricia stepped in and took her spot, basically. And so I, I just, as I look at you and I see you on screen and what you're saying, what you're doing, it reminds me so much of what Tita Linda was all about. And I was, that was about the libraries. So I wanted, I could not let that moment pass without giving acknowledgement and recognition to your great aunt. So.
Oh, thank you so much. Yes, I feel her every time I'm here, talking with all of you. So yes, bless her soul.
Yes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I think all my colleagues have said it. I just want to say thank you for everything that you do and support. We'll be providing all of our community reports later on in the meeting. But, you know, the DCPLA luncheon was, was, was beautiful, brought the community together. And, and as a person, as a former Board of Trustee for library, for the libraries, you're keeping that heartbeat alive for the libraries and keeping it accessible for the whole range of our population here in Daly City. So thank you so much, Patricia.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Sure. Okay, so moving on in our agenda. Approval of minutes? Can I get a motion to approval of minutes for regular meeting of March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two? So we have a first by Councilmember Glenn Sylvester and then a second by Councilmember Justin Manalo. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items that are, that you, that my colleagues wish to have further discussion?
All right.
Seeing none, can I get a motion for the approval of the consent agenda, please? Okay, so I have a first by Councilmember Justin Manalo and a second by Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. I think I forgot one, approval of the, can I get a motion for the approval of agenda, please?
Glenn Sylvester, I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Second by Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni. All right. All right. So, so we have public number, number, number seven.
Um, Mr. Mayor, can we have an approval of the consent agenda?
Oh, that's right.
I think there was a first and a second.
Yes. Um, all those in favor for the approval of consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
We did that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Zimmerman. Okay. Moving on to public hearings, item number seven, public hearing, proposed ordinance amending chapter two point five eight of the Daly City Municipal Code, Small Business Commission, meeting frequency, and I'll hand it over to Brandon Phipps.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, and thank you for the introduction. Vice Mayor and City Council, the item before you this evening pertains to the Small Business Commission, which was established in line with the adoption of ordinance number fourteen thirty-five. As originally written in the approved ordinance, the five-member commission holds six regularly scheduled meetings per year, taking place on the second Thursday of every other month. Based on feedback from City Council and members of the Small Business Commission, it was indicated to staff that there was an interest in increasing the frequency of Small Business Commission meetings from six to twelve regularly scheduled meetings per year. And to confirm this interest, staff distributed a survey to Small Business Commissioners in November, two thousand and twenty-one, requesting their feedback and comment. And the results of the survey, yet confirmed our suspicion, demonstrated unanimous interest from members of the commission in increasing the frequency from six to twelve. So with that in mind, staff is recommending that council approve the attached revised ordinance, which reflects the increase in meeting frequency. And that will do it. Thank you very much for your time. I am available to answer any questions or provide any additional information desired by mayor or council members.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Phipps. First up to bat, Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Phipps, for your presentation. I am happy to see that this is on the agenda this evening. You know, giving support to our small businesses is so important and having a committee meet more so and seeing that commissioners are actually wanting to meet and give back to the community and more of their time and the effort is, is, is wonderful to see. You know, over the course of two years, we know that some businesses unfortunately didn't survive, but there are businesses that are thriving. And I think we all know how important it is to ensure that, that our small businesses thrive as they're the backbone of our local economy and community. We've, we know that small restaurants are also, or the restaurant industry is, is part of that economy. And to be able to provide an opportunity for these commissioners to dive deeper instead of meeting, and I don't even know how many times they have met la- last year. I think this is the step in the right direction and it's wonderful to see that when commissioners want to give more of their time, their commitment, you know, they're, they're not getting paid. I think it's wonderful, just like the Arts and Culture Commission. I think it, it, it's just a wonderful thing and this is similar to that. There's going to be more meetings where small business commissioners want to put their time and effort. It's, it's something that's a beautiful thing. And so I'm in full support of this and, um, looking forward to vote on this item. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo. Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to say, uh, of all the commissions that we have in the city, there's a uniqueness about each one. there's a uniqueness about each one of these commissions, and that is the representative from staff who serves on these commissions. So what I'm leading to is the point that, Mr. Phipps, the work you have done, the information you have provided, how you guide these commissioners, because they're all new, is a testament. And now to hear that they would like to meet every month, it is a testament of the. I'm trying to think of the right word, the glue that holds everything together, but that's not the right word. But you understand where I'm, where I'm coming from. So until we finish the comments, I definitely support this initiative, and I would gladly make a motion that we move forward and adopt this resolution. Thank you.
Second?
I have, I still have my hand up.
Right. And we have a first, second, and I'm still accepting a comment, so Councilmember Pamela D. Giovanni.
Thank you. Before we make a second, so I just want to say thank you, Mr. Phipps, with your leadership and concur with a lot of things that they said. Also, we know that they're very busy, and with some of them, their businesses has actually picked up after the COVID. In particular, you know, like for me, I know Air Lollipops, because, not because she's my commissioner, but Maria and what she does and gives back to the community and Charles and the other commissioners. So not only do they do that, they work hard hours, and you know it. So for them to even, when our saw was unanimous, that's great feedback. And to give them the survey themselves and let them have their own voice, which that is what we're supposed to be doing, and that they have their own guidance, I appreciate that, that they do that, and for the leadership. So I'd like to see where it goes. And, oh, only one thing. The only feedback I got was, would you mind whoever sends the calendar out? Is, I mean, the meeting notices to them, it's just a little tidbit, to please put the, the dates of the meeting on their calendar. They were saying they said that they will have a reminder, because some of them are working long hours, and that way they'll have a little reminder. I think it pops, pops up and gives them a reminder. That's the only thing, they said that would be very, very helpful in that manner. But other than that, I appreciate the enthusiasm by council members, but I would like to have the opportunity to speak. My hand had been up, and to be respectful of others is very important. So thank you. With that, I appreciate it and fully support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Pamela D. Giovanni. Vice Mayor Ray Buentora.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, is what I'm talking about when I spoke last meeting about the need to get our commissioners more, more involved and to welcome their input and their advice on things. And this is an example of a commission that has stepped up, like the Arts and Culture Commission, and said, we want to meet more. And so I applaud that, and I think that's a really good thing for our commissions to do, to take that proactive approach and be rewarded for it by recognizing that we appreciate their willingness to serve the, the, the city and the community. So I wholeheartedly agree that this is something that was due. I, I actually thought they should have been meeting much more. But I recognize this was a project that just started, and there's some ramping up time that needs to be done. The other thing that I, I comment on is something I've wanted to see happen with, with, with these commissions. And what, what I'm speaking of is, so very often, the only way I really know what's going on is if I watch the commission meetings, which I do, in fact, watch, and I speak to the commission members. But I think more interaction with the commission would be great. And maybe even like having the president report to the city council a, as an agendized item, and, and telling us what their plans are, what they're thinking, what are the things we can do to facilitate or encourage a certain direction. Because I find some of those meetings quite fascinating, particularly the, the Small Business Commission, because your commissioners come up with some really good ideas. And I would just love to be a part of trying to develop them and show them that we are supportive and we're listening. And so I think that, that would be a good idea. Like, for example, the library, they do a lot of that. The library commissioners and the DCPLA, they come on council and they, they speak. And I think a good part would be served if, if the, the Business Commission did that as well. So thank you and I support.
Vice Mayor Ray Buentora, I think that's a fantastic idea, Vice Mayor, to, to get more engagement with our other commissions. I think that's a very, very superb idea. I really, I am also in support of the increasing the frequency of meeting. It also shows alignment of all the different boards and commissions in terms of their dedication and consistency in terms of meeting and providing this space of dialogue. So I'm totally in support of that, of the, of it. It also shows engagement and empowerment for the commissions and sharing the same points as Councilmember Justin Manalo, like, you know, to have Arts and Culture Commission do their work and, you know, have the vested interest in, in looking at ways to deepen their, their work. Same thing with the Small Business Commission and all the other boards and commissions. This is one way to provide more engagement, more empowerment for our, for our, our city and our trustees and commissioners. And, you know, with the Small Business Commission meeting more frequently, hopefully this will help engage small businesses to help turn the corner on the pandemic, pandemic COVID nineteen and, you know, issues around economics. So I know we have a first already and a second, so.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. This is an ordinance, so procedurally, I think we just open and close public hearing.
Okay.
Any public hearing and then move for a motion.
Got you. Alright. I can, can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing.
And a second by Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Are there any public comments for this agenda item?
For those members of the public who wish to comment on item number seven, please click the raise hand feature to speak on that agenda item. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. No hands raised.
Alright, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please? There we go, a motion by Councilmember Justin Manalo, and a second by, can I get a second?
Yeah, Glenn Sylvester.
Okay, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Okay. Can we get a motion for the city attorney to read by title only?
Motion to read by title only?
Can I get a second, please?
Second?
Second by Councilmember Pamela D. Giovanni.
We can get a voice vote on that, Mayor.
Oh, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Good, thank you. Council, this is an ordinance of the City of Daly City, amending section two point five eight point zero six zero of Title Two of the Daly City Municipal Code regarding Small Business Commission meetings. And we'll entertain a council member to introduce the ordinance.
Glenn Sylvester, I'll have the exception.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Alright. Communications, item number eight, coastal, coastal development permit, use permit, UPR dash two dash two two dash one five five three six, onsite movement of landfill waste at Muscle Rock landfill, one five zero West Line Drive. And I'll hand it over to Mr. Michael Van La cousin for the presentation.
Yes, members of the city council, Honorable Mayor, this item was forwarded to you by the City Planning Commission. This is a request by the City of Daly City to conduct maintenance at the Muscle Rock landfill. Everybody knows where the landfill is. Hopefully, it's at Muscle Rock. There's a kind of a passive park in this area that's used. And as many of you may be aware, there is a closed landfill at this location. The proposed maintenance improvements include removing landfill waste from the upper, upper north canyon face, estimated to be an average of ten feet below existing grade, and dispose of the excavated materials onsite at the disposal saw located approximately a quarter mile to the south. There's also a proposal by the city to construct a drainage swale to guide drainage away from the area and hydrose the area upon completion. Sometime back, it was discovered by the city that there was a landfill being exposed. So trash material, you know, coming to the, within sight, and the city needed to take action. I believe the city council has authorized funding for this, and this is that, the coastal development permit to execute that work. This is essentially the maintenance plan. It shows from an aerial satellite where the project limits are with regard to this permit within the red area, showing where the material is going to be taken from, and the location of the, where the landfill material would be deposited. There's a minimum distance of thirty feet from the bluff edge for the exit, for the, the area where the material is being taken away, just to give some context. These are some site photos showing, you know, what this essentially, uh, old landfill, like trash, looks like, is being exposed. It was discovered again back in January, and the city is taking steps to move the land, move this material from one portion of the Muscle Rock site to another portion, so that the material does not end up, obviously, down on the beach or on the ocean. That's, of course, what we would like to avoid. Here's another area that shows some of the sloughing of the earth material in this area that's causing this problem. There's just another photograph from January of this year. The proposed action is consistent with the city's coastal development program. No buildings or structures are improved. There are no improvements within fifty feet of the bluff red edge. There are no permanent foundations. Public access to the coast is not impeded. As I'd mentioned, that there's a passive recreation area that exists at Muscle Rock, and none of that would be affected by this work. The proposal is consistent with the resource protection, combining district. This area's own open space with a resource protection overlay. And the grading that would occur by the city meets the requirements of the state of California and the City of Daly City. And there's no adverse impacts of the site, on the site or adjacent areas. There's no endangerment of life or property, and there's no protective structures that are required to complete the work. Proposals except from CQ. And again, the planning commission took a look at this on March first. There were some comments that were outlined in the city council staff report. And the planning commission did recommend that the city council adopt the findings and an environmental assessment, and also approve the coastal development permit. If there's any questions, planning staff as well as engineering staff is present to answer those.
Thank you, Michael. At this point, I'd like to open up the conversation to my colleagues, Councilmember Pamela D. Giovanni. Sorry, Councilmember Pam, your, your mic is off.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Michael, so what happened? Because supposedly something occurred where there was a, the waste was falling at Muscle Rock?
That's essentially correct. I can let the engineering staff add to, maybe answer your question more fully. But essentially, yes, there's sloughing of earth material, and you can kind of see it from this aerial. This is actually looking toward the Muscle Rock landfill site from above the ocean. And this material is starting to slough away, and it's exposing the, basically, it's old trash underneath. And that's, this sloughing is a natural thing that occurs over time with wave erosion. And that's just something that we have to deal with from time to time.
So this is not just going to be a one-time thing, which is, it will be ongoing, obviously, for the erosion?
Sure, this question came up at the planning commission meeting about, you know, whether this is a one-time thing. City is seeking this permit tonight to take care of the immediate, you know, problem that we see in front of us. The city is undertaking, I believe, a study to find out if this is a more widespread problem. I don't know if engineering wants to add to that, but that's essentially our understanding of the situation.
Is Kevin, is that Kevin?
Yeah, no, Mike, that's correct. We are engaging with consultants in order to do a further study, more long-term, and a look at this landslide. But for now, this, yeah, the CDP takes care of the immediate issue while we engage some professional sort of landslide experts in the area. And we do intend to bring back more information to council at a future date.
Great, thank you. I mean, hopefully, we can get some grants to try to help. But thank you very much, and thanks, Mike. Thank you. Thank you, engineering. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I mean, given the presentation, I, and what needs to be done, it's quite obvious. I mean, we, we need to do something, and so I'm, I'm ready to support the next steps in order to see what needs to be done. And, and, and so there's not a continuance of this. So, thank you. Also, so with that, I'm, I'm happy to make a motion to approve this. Is it a hearing, Mr. Mayor?
It's not a hearing, Councilmember, unless there is public comment, we can take public comment.
Well, a motion to approve this item. Thank you.
You? Alright. Okay. So we have a first and a second. Madam City Clerk.
Mr. Buena Ventura.
Aye.
Ms. D. Giovanni. Uh, Ms. D. Giovanni?
Sorry, having trouble on my hand. Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye. Alright, so the motion passes. Moving on to ordinances. Item number nine, second reading, ordinance number one four five four, repealing and replacing chapter eight point six four. Subject regulating the use of disposable food service ware. And I'll pass it to Ms. Zimmerman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. This is the second reading of ordinance number fifteen, fourteen fifty-four. It came before the council by introduction. It is an ordinance to repeal and replace chapter eight point six four, regulating the use of disposable food service ware. Entertain a motion.
And to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Justin Manalo and a second by Vice Mayor Ray Buentora. Can I have? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye. Alright, motion passes, moving along. We have a second reading, ordinance number fourteen fifty-five, adding chapter fifteen point eight zero to the Daly City Municipal Code, subject on electrical vehicle charging stations. And I'll hand it again back to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. This ordinance came before the council by way of introduction at the last regularly scheduled city council meeting. This is the second reading of ordinance number fourteen fifty-five, adding chapter fifteen point eight zero regarding electrical vehicle charging stations, and we will entertain a motion.
Sylvester, I'll make the motion.
Councilmember Glenn Sylvester makes the motion. Do I have a second? I'll go ahead and second it. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye. Moving along here, we have public appearances and oral communications. And I'll hand it to Leilani if we have any public appearances or oral communications.
In accordance with the Brown Act laws governing regular meetings, the city council is not authorized to speak to or take action on any other items in this meeting. Members of the public who wish to comment may click the raise hand feature to raise your hand to speak. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. It is important to note that staff will announce the name of the last person whose hand was raised upon calling for public comment, and that person will be the last verbal comment. If additional speakers queue up after the last called speaker, the mayor may continue to allow public comment if time allows. Otherwise, public comment may be emailed to cityclerk@dailycity.org to be added to the record and shared with the city council. When you hear your name called, staff will send you a request to unmute your microphone, and you may begin speaking. Each person will receive a maximum of two minutes to speak and may only speak once. When your two minutes have been reached, we ask that you wrap up your comments. Speakers on a compliance will be muted. Any use of profanity will result in the speaker being muted immediately. We have no hands, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Leilani. Moving on to appointments, board commission, membership committee appointments. Do we have anybody that I'd like to appoint or reappoint anybody? All right, I have two today. I would like to reappoint Nate Ramos on the Board of Recreation. Can I do as a dual roles, or can I do have to do it one by one?
You would have to do motions for each appointment.
Okay.
Second.
All right. We got a first and a second for Nate Ramos. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Also make a motion to reappoint Justine Santos on the Library Board of Trustees. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Second by Councilmember Justin Manalo. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. See here. Moving on to council committee reports, council committee meetings from March tenth to March twenty-third.
I think we have a city council committee report, or council committee report, Mayor Dos Magual. We had a CDBG meeting, right? Regarding CDBG funds and then ARP allocations.
Right, you're completely correct. I was looking at my notes. I was like, yeah, put that. Councilmember Justin Manalo, would you like to go ahead and introduce, or and then I could follow up?
Okay, sure. You know, we had a CDBG advisory subcommittee. It was around the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three CDBG allocations, as well as home funding prior to the release of to our or actually it was about our home art funds, as as mentioned. And what was discussed is really being able to have the funding allocations for CDBG and the home funds for the year. What we talked about was how we would allocate some of the home funds to ensure that there would be a total of one million two hundred forty-six thousand one hundred forty-seven available to help with affordable rental housing development. And then also with the American Rescue Plan ARP. We talked about how we are eligible as a city to receive one million four hundred eleven thousand one hundred and seventy-nine in home art funds. And so the action plan was for the allocation of these funding allocations from both entities, and that's what we discussed. Overall, we both agreed on the recommendations, and that those recommendations will be brought forth to city council.
I think you got them straight on. So it'll be coming to an agenda soon, and we'll be talking about where we'll be distributing those specific ARP funds. Okay. We also had a meeting with myself and staff and Councilmember Justin Manalo with folks from Youth Leadership Institute, Rod Spikes, and Ali. Oh, my God, I forgot her last name. But we had a meeting talking about providing more resources and education around sexual harassment. There has been a growing local movement in San Francisco and also in Daly City about sexual harassment and, you know, addressing issues of toxic masculinity and providing resources and educational spaces for students to have places and places to talk about issues such as sexual harassment, and also providing more trainings for teachers. And where we come to play is to provide like more resources and educational spaces and dialogues when we talk about mental health and and discussing things like sensitive issues as sexual harassment and trauma in our communities. So we had like a very fruitful discussion. And I think it's just step one to more meetings to have our youth feel safe in their in their schools and in the community, and really to really discuss the the hard issues of of like toxic masculinity in our in our community. So Councilmember Justin Manalo, if you'd like to add anything?
I just want to say thank you, Mayor Dos Magual, for convening the committee together and bringing the youth to the table, most especially having their voices heard, and and having those leaders bring forth a sensitive topic that that's not necessarily at the forefront. And so I think that was shared leadership, and it's always great to see young people bring awareness and also their courage around what you talked about, them feeling safe and really feeling safe wherever they are, whether it's in school or wherever they may be. And it just was great that you were able to also share what you're going to do around the initiative that you have, Mr. Mayor, around the mental health first aid, right? So there's all these really essential should be baseline trainings for everyone, and I'm really glad to see that that's going to be provided for the community. And so that's all I have to say about this topic. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo. We also talked about, you know, ideas of putting into practice restorative justice, restorative justice practices in our schools, and hopefully we'll have a more robust discussion as we invite like members of the JUHSD board to discuss this. This is an issue that many youth are talking about, and I think it's, you know, if it's an issue that's affecting them, it's affecting our future, and we want to be a model and a beacon of hope for discussing issues such as such as this. Okay. Are there any other council committee reports?
Mr. Mayor, we've had a busy two weeks, I will say. So we also had our joint, our water issues meeting. So that's that's three now. I know, we in in two weeks. And so we had the Water Issues Council Subcommittee with the Vista Grande Project Joint Powers Authority, and so we had that on Monday, last Monday, on March twenty-first, which was to be able to create this Joint Powers Authority, really to support the Vista Grande Project, which is extremely essential and has been in the works for a very long time, right? The Vista Grande Drainage Basin Improvement Project. And so that's that was also a committee that we met at. So been busy times, Mayor.
Speaking of this, these meetings are flowing like water. It's like a waterfall of meetings. I also have some other council committee reports. I attended a PCE meeting on March twenty-fourth, and there was a if I my notes here. There was, we we approved a resolution delegating authority to our chief executive officer to execute a power purchase and sale agreement for renewable supply with Second Imperial Geothermal Company. So we're trying to expand our our supply of clean energy for residents up and down the peninsula. Also, we had the Council Cities that we hosted for Daly City March twenty-fifth, where I was joined by Councilmember Pamela D. Giovanni and Councilmember Justin Manalo. One thing that was that I appreciated was that we highlighted our finalists this year for our Daly City Youth Poet Laureate Finalists. We had one, five youth youth poets that presented their poems, and they presented it live. So we had Iris Lee, who was an eleventh grader at Jefferson High School. She she performed a poem called California. We had Hannah de Campo Fam, a ninth grader from Westmore High School, and she presented her poem Buried Spring. Chloe Chu, a ninth grader from Westmore High School, and she performed her poem A Portrait of Motherland. Julian Malari, this was great. Julian had such great presence for an eighth grader from Fernando Rivera Intermediate School, and she performed her poem A Pause. And the last one was Isabella Izzy De Souza, an eleventh grader from St. Ignatius, and she performed a poem called Voyage. And I just wanted to switch it up for our Council of City meetings. Usually, we sit in presentations, and I just wanted to expand the space of council cities to include our young people within within our space and range of electeds around the county. See that. Okay, are there any other council committee reports? Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Justin Manalo, go ahead.
Thank you. I I attended my Basca. Thank you very much. Basca, sorry, meeting. Let me give you an update. On March seventeenth, we had our Basca Board Meeting, and we adopted the following resolution, number twenty twenty-two dash oh four, which we are actually continuing to host teleconference meetings. We usually have a report from the SFPUC. Mr. Ritchie and provided us a water supply update. The statewide drought conditions persist. Hetch Hetchy reservoir is likely to fill, but the entire storage system is unlikely to fill. During the twenty thirteen, twenty sixteen drought, SFPUC filled Hetch Hetchy virtually every year by debiting its water bank. The state water board curtailments create significant uncertainty about how much runoff we can store, and the drought may extend beyond this year. The state is emphasizing that it's truly a statewide problem. The date with water usage reduction performance is promising, but summer water use reduction will be the real test for all of us. And now for also, as of March fourteen, twenty twenty-two, seventy-two point seven percent of the total system storage, which is below normal for this time of year, and we remain in a statewide drought with a snowpack and precipitation with a Tullommy River watershed below the median. And so on November twenty-third, the SFPUC adopted a ten percent system-wide voluntary water use reduction target. And for the period of July one, twenty twenty-one to March third, twenty twenty-two, the total regional water system use is at five point five percent less than the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty levels. And let's see. Also, the Basca Water Supply Update for January twenty twenty-two, the total potable water use was eight percent less than January twenty thirteen. Our next board meeting will be held on May nineteen. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo. Before we head on to our city council reports, I just recognize that I provided the wrong last name for Nate for our Board of Recreation. It's not Nate Ramos. It's Nate Ortiz. Do I, Rose, do I have to redo the motion, or?
To be on the safe side, we could just go ahead and redo the motion.
Okay, so I want to redo the motion for reappointing Nate Ortiz on the Board of Recreation.
Second.
Okay, a second by Councilmember Pamela D. Giovanni. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
And Nate, if you're watching out there, I'm so sorry, brother. So I'm going to go ahead to item number twelve, city council reports. Councilmember Pamela D. Giovanni.
I think, here we go. I want to make sure I'm unmuted. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm sure this will be some of the same for both everyone, for other people. That our Daly City Public Libraries Association, how their wonderful, wonderful St. Patrick's Day fundraiser at the Colma Community Center. It was really well done. They had the dancers, Irish dancers, the children. Mayor was there. It was great. And with the children and our assistant city manager, city manager in Leilani, so we all had a really nice table. Food was delicious, and everybody came together for to support our libraries. That was like really, really fabulous. Then attended the Jefferson High School one hundredth anniversary, which I was humbled. I was within the, I was in the car with the mayor, and it was a parade, but it was a really great parade, even though it was short, I thought. They had the marching band. They had the motorcycles. They had Assembly Member Kevin Mullen. They had a lot of great people there with to be there to celebrate, put together by many volunteers, being the PTSA, Pitt, and so many others, Teresa Fabua, Raina and everyone, the JUHSD, Congresswoman Jackie Speer, Phil Teeng, Scott Weiner, many attendees there. The mayor of Colma was there, and Diana Colvin, Councilmember in Colma as well. So great people, huge crowd, especially in the beginning. I thought it was great. All the different classes from even the alum at tents. They were selling food, music, they had entertainment all day from the Poly Club. So I thought it was fabulous. The sun came out. We didn't anticipate that. But in Daly City, Daly City weather in the beginning, but the sun did shine. So I think that that was like a fabulous, fabulous day of celebrating one hundred years of Jefferson, and don't know if we'll be around for the next hundred, but it was great. So I know others attended, so I'll let them speak as well on our city council report. So with that, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Pamela D. Giovanni. Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will keep this short, you know, last Sunday, I think it was the prior Sunday Supervisor Kanapa, he had a prayer for Ukraine at Redwood City and had the Council General of Ukraine there with community leader Oksana. I mean, it was really powerful. I mean, it was really powerful to have the young Ukrainian-American youth speak about, you know, just how they felt and how they are praying for other children out there that are suffering. These were young leaders, like I would say, from elementary to junior high that spoke up and was, was eloquent, but also, you know, it was a time to just unite and from different denominations be able to pray for Ukraine. And then the St. Patrick fundraiser, it was really great to see Victoria Mabilang, and I know it was her birthday right around that corner. And so I can feel like it was actually pre-pandemic times. That's what I felt from that event. It was finally like, oh my goodness, like it felt like a couple of years ago. And so I know it was a mini reunion, but for a wonderful cause. And, you know, I always also tried, tried to give back. And so, you know, purchased some raffle tickets and, and liked to support the D C P L A and, and came out with a basket. And so that was, that was really nice, which of course I gave to my children. And last but not least, you know, my alma mater, Jefferson Union High School or Jefferson High School, class of 98, my beloved high school, it was so great to see my old principal, staff that were there and just a mix of alumnis from different generations. It was definitely a festive event and just had, that mini parade was wonderful too. You felt the energy. So you've, that blue and gold energy right there, that, that, that even though it was short, that energy is, is exactly what Jefferson High School was all about. I mean spirited. Imagine that as a young person growing up in Daly City and going to Jeff. That spirit was always there, whether you're rooting for your basketball team, your, your football team, a track team. I mean, I think that was, that's something growing up. Like everyone from, everyone just got along and supported one another. And it's 100 years and it was really wonderful, great, great speech and up there, Mr. Mayor. But blue and gold, blue and gold forever. That's, that, that remains in my heart. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo. Vice Mayor Ray Ben Ture.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to take this moment to comment on what I thought was truly outstanding State of the City speech that you gave moments ago. I thought that the presentation with the graphics was very informative and I'm sure I should thank Ms. Malp and Stephen also for putting that together. Because it was very well done. I mean, it was very clear, precise. You got the point across. But I will say that the most impressive that I felt from your presentation was your closing comments. I thought you were very strong in the end and you, you had the effect of, I think, inspiring our people, our community with the words you said and how you were focused on addressing the people. And so I thought it was very, very well done. And I just didn't want to have the chance not to tell you that. And thank you publicly for a, a job well done. Thank you.
Much, Vice Mayor. From your words, powerful. Thank you so much. I appreciate those kind words. Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Echoing Vice Mayor Buna Ventura, really, Mayor, it was, you can tell a, a lot of it came from your heart and just your passion to serve our community. And I just wanted to say absolutely wonderful job this evening.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Justin Manalo. Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Well, rather than go to every part of it, the, the awareness of the mental health and bringing it into a personal level, that's admirable because we all, we all been affected. So through the COVID and I thought that openness, that was really very vulnerable. So the people knew it. So that was very, very humble. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni. I just want to say, you know, leadership is only as strong as, as us and those kind of words are here in my heart. And just want to say thank you to, to you all as well. Like we can't, I'm just one person, one vote, but all of us together, it's like a fist, right? You know, all fingers put together, strong fist, strong impact. And thank you for those words. I forgot to have one of my announcements. So before we leave, I forgot there were so many meetings over these past two weeks, but I also was able to participate in the Grab and Go Lunches for March for Meals Community Champions Week on March 21st. And I had the opportunity and honor to serve alongside volunteers to provide meals and foods for, for seniors that came by and we gave free food to those that came in person and we dropped them off in their cars. I really appreciate talking to the volunteers and staff about how they prepare it, why they prepare it, why do they do the work that they do? It inspires me because sometimes we don't see that work out in public. It's not something that we publicize. It's not in the newspapers. It's people that do it like clockwork. So I want to thank everybody, Aunt Cooney, all the way down, Opal, all the, the cooks, all the volunteers. I was able to talk to a couple of seniors and, you know, they're wondering like, when are we going to start opening a bachi ball? And I was like, soon, soon. We just got to open up safely. I also had the chance to speak to four seniors and four elders for wellness calls. So I was able to talk to a few people, talk to people that were involved in Daly City staff back in the day and what became a five-minute call became a half an hour conversation about how Daly City was in the 50s and 60s and 70s. And, you know, as a person that teaches history, I really appreciate those testimonials because it gives me a picture of how Daly City has, has grown and where do we want to go from here? And I also talked to some of the staff about what are they doing for those that are not mobile and can go to Dolger to pick up food and talking about their Meals on Wheels program and delivery program. It just makes me proud to be part of Daly City and that these are the programs that that represent us. And I'm very, very proud of the work that everybody at Dolger is doing. Okay, so with that, any staff reports?
Thank you, Mayor. Just really quickly, I wanted to just echo everyone's sentiment about the state of the city. Stephen Stolti, our Assistant City Manager, really helped with the department heads gather all that information, really illuminating our incredible workforce. And Leilani did the background, the slides. I, I really can't take any credit for it, but Mayor, you made it your own and it was really, really wonderful. So thanks for that. And no other report out.
Anna?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
What, if I ask, if I could ask Ms. Malp, what is the status of the Ukrainian flag situation?
Good question. I, we have the flag and I believe we are waiting some scheduling with regard to when to, when to raise that. And I know you had mentioned Vice Mayor to go ahead and go forward with that event. Even if you are unable to, because there is some urgency around that. So we will circle back with the rest of the council either this evening or in the morning to, to get that going forward.
Great. Thank you.
Keisha, also thank you to Stephen Leilani. You know, you, you gave me like the ingredients, you know, and we made a meal out of it. So thank you. I know we have, going to adjournment in memory, we have a few. I'm going to go ahead and start with Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As many of you know that Dr. Madeline Albright passed away, who we all know as a, a tall figure. She was our first woman Secretary of State. In 1993, she was approved by Clinton to be our ambassador to the United Nations. And it was in 1997 that she became our Secretary of State for the very first woman. 2012, President Obama awarded her the Presidential Medal of Honor. One thing that was personal about her is that she was born in Prague and that she did not find out till later in life that she had 26 members in her family that passed away in the Holocaust, although she was Roman Catholic and grew up that way. She had no idea about her past or history. So as many of you pointed out, it's our history that we, that shapes us who we are. And I believe I've heard that from our mayor. And so with that, I'd like to close in our memory and also for the members lost in Ukraine. And it actually has hit a lot of people here that lost loved ones that are over there fighting. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni. Vice Mayor Ray Ben Ture.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like us to close in memory of a lawyer, a friend of mine. His name was Sid Lorvan. Sid was a practicing lawyer for more than 60 years. He went to Albany Law School in 1957 and he was admitted to the New York State Bar in 1958 and then the California Bar in 1961. So he was a private defender attorney, much like I am. And he's been practicing criminal defense. He's actually also the former mayor of Pacifica. And so he just passed away recently and I'd like us to adjourn in his memory. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And we also have Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to adjourn in memory for Ms. Sinida Lontok Peralta, the mother of Joseph El Peralta. He's a community member and local journalist. It's deepest condolences to you and your family.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Justin Manalo. And we have one last one, who is Jesse Gámez Senior, who is the father of Daly City Police Department Captain John Gámez. And with all those that that was said earlier, I would like to provide a moment of silence. A meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Everybody rests well and we'll see you in April. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.